Good evening, fellow executive colleagues, officers, councillors. I see I've got quite a contingent at the rear of the room this evening. Welcome all of you and members of the press in the public gallery as well. So, welcome to our executive meeting and it's the first of 2018. So, my first part on the agenda is to confirm the minutes of the last executive meeting, which was held on the 28th of November 2017. Can I confirm that you are happy that I sign those at the end of this meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. Any apologies for absence, Mrs McQuillan? Oh, Mr, sorry, Mr Taylor.
Thank you, Leader. Apologies from councillor Bolton.
Thank you very much. Any declarations of interest?
None received in advance, Leader.
Any declarations, colleagues? Any questions from...
Sorry, Leader. Member of Hazlemere Town Council, interest.
Okay. And those are noted, thank you. Any questions from members of the public? No, in that case, we'll move to item five. Colleagues, there is a lot on the agenda tonight. It's a significant agenda, to say the least. And Mr Hall, councillor Hall, you have an awful lot to cover. So, thank you and I'll leave you to the first item, which is the medium term financial plan for 2018-19. Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Leader. Yeah, I've got quite a lot to cover tonight, so I'll try and be brief and stick to the main facts. As members are aware, we have a medium term shortfall over three years of 2.7 million. This comes from three key areas: inflation, Surrey County Council recycling funding and government grant reductions. However, with the hard work of members of officers, we are in a position to present a balanced budget to full council. The five key areas which have enabled us to both save and raise income are the council tax increase of 3% roughly, which gives us about £280,000; savings in procurement, which bring us a saving of around about £40,000; investment property income, which should bring us in round about a quarter of a million; other income, including garden waste, building controls, are budgeted to bring us in about another £115,000. And for efficiency savings, we are looking to save around about £70,000. Crucially, Leader, we have not reduced community organisation funding, we have allocated more money for community safety, we have raised revenues on planning and invested the lion's share back into the service to make it better. There's no change to the council tax support scheme and unlike last year, there is no requirement to increase car parking charges. Furthermore, our capital spending will remain around £2 million a year and to renew the services and infrastructure in the borough. Once again, there will be a mid-year review of our position, but I must remind executive members and members that substantial risks still exist. But today, members, I present a balanced budget for approval at council and I would like to personally thank the officers, the members of the ONS committee and those members who have worked tirelessly to make this happen. The recommendations are detailed on page three.
Councillor Hall, thank you very much and yes, my thanks and I think out of all of us on the executive team, to all the officers who've been involved, Mr Clark, Mr Vickers and the entire team and the officer team across all services who've worked so hard across a number of months to help us get to this point. Colleagues, any comments on this? Would anyone like to speak? I think it fair to say that councillor Hall has summed this up very well and I am particularly pleased, given the fact that we were, as he acknowledges, in a difficult place this time last year. We made and had to make some very difficult and very challenging decisions that weren't popular and I think we all recognise that, but we had to, we had to. And for us to now be in a position where through the hard work of councillor Hall as the portfolio holder and through the rest of the leadership team, we've managed to turn things around, start to really focus on things like our investment advisory board and the investments from that really coming good and helping us, it's really encouraging to see the fact that we've been able to commit a significant amount of our funding to the, some of our most vulnerable voluntary groups, the fact that we're not increasing car parking charges in the borough, again, all really positive. And I'm really pleased to see this budget, excellent news that despite the challenges, we have managed to balance it and I too am very happy that we move this and that this goes to council in two weeks' time. Colleagues, we have 11 recommendations under item five. I'll take those on block if we're agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. We move to item six and that's the housing revenue account business plan. Councillor Hall, would you like to take that?
Thank you once again, Leader. As members are aware, the housing revenue account was reviewed in depth last year and has a robust and deliverable long-term plan in place. For the next financial year, we are required to reduce rents by 1% again, which leads obviously to a reduction in total revenues. However, even given the reduction in revenues, we've still managed to spend £21 million in new bills in the last three years with a further £15 million proposed in the budget report. We have managed to free staff costs and we have confidence that our capital resources should last between three and seven years. The housing revenue account in the future may need to borrow in order to build, but until there is financial clarity on the rental income and the rises which we may be able to make, this currently remains on hold. The housing revenue account is in good financial shape and we eagerly await central government's decision on rent rises. Once we have clarity on this, it is likely, with the portfolio holder, that a full review will be conducted to determine what level of resources can be reallocated within the current budget. The recommendations are on page four. Thank you.
Councillor Hall, thank you very much. Councillor Mrs King.
Thank you very much, Leader. I think we're in a very different place with the housing revenue account this year from where we were last year. I think we were forecasting an awful lot of gloom and doom, but I have to say that the team has worked incredibly hard this year, worked hard on efficiencies and really, really looking at what's being spent on what. And it's been really encouraging. Various things have now happened as a result. The sheltered services, which are now going to be called senior living, have delivered financial certainty, a review of their findings, so that we know that we're going to be able to continue a manager in each unit for the foreseeable future. Long may that last. We've driven down the voids, rents, officers have worked incredibly hard and they have and my thanks, personal thanks, must go to Hugh Wagstaff for his incessant driving of the service and I think it's a really good sign. I think, I'm pleased, I'm really happy and I think our customers are really happy and to such an extent that we've got to the stage where we no longer need a complaints officer and I think that actually speaks for itself. Thank you.
Councillor King, thank you very... Colleagues, would anyone else like to speak?
Thank you, Leader. Along with the reduction in rents, the government policy was that larger properties, as they became void, were to be sold. Is that policy still in existence and if so, what number of properties are we expecting to have to sell?
Mrs King, can I ask you to take that?
Thank you. If I had a crystal ball, I might be able to give you an answer. The answer at the moment is that policy has not been implemented, the government haven't made their mind up yet. Whether they ever will, I don't know. Watch this space.
Colleagues, Catherine Edwards.
Thank you, Leader. I'd just like to commend the portfolio holders, both of them, for their hard work and all the officers because I really think Waverley are doing a fantastic job here and I can't believe how far we've come and I'd like to thank everybody concerned on behalf of my residents. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards, thank you very much. Any other comments from any other members? Well, in that case, there are nine recommendations under item six. Can we take those on block if they're agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And we now move to item seven. Councillor Hall again.
Thank you, Leader. Budget management report, this is the last report before the end of the financial year. The latest forecast does not identify any material changes from the budget, however, there are a few areas to note within the report. Some good news is that our bid to take part in the Surrey business rates pilot has been successful. The next step is to agree the government's required memorandum of understanding in order for the pilot to progress. Delegated authorities now sought for the chief financial officer in consultation with the leader and the portfolio holder for finance to agree the memorandum. The report also includes a number of budget reschedule requests. These are included in the nine recommendations.
Councillor Hall, thank you. Colleagues, any comments on the items that are in that? Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Leader. I think the business rates retention is really quite significant, not just for the borough but also the county and I know that both those levels of tiers of authority have got difficulties ongoing with the finances and the fact that we're able to start this process as a pilot earlier than others is a real benefit to this borough and I hope to see the fruits of that work. Thank you.
Yes, councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Leader. Just one slight question here in terms of item 17 under the environment on page 77. It looks like we're underperforming in terms of the rental income. Is there any particular reason for this? Because wherever I go, the car park seems to be chock a block and is there any particular area that has caused this, you know, underachievement? Because as portfolio holder for business development in Waverley, we need to understand why businesses aren't picking these renter car spaces up. Have we got any information on that, please?
Can I ask Mr Homewood, are you able to help us with an answer to that question, please?
My understanding is that this isn't pay and display income or season ticket income, it is income from people who rent parts of our land around our car parks, it's not been taken up this year. So it's not the actual usage of the car parks for car parking, it's rental income from other people who use our car park areas.
Thank you very much, Mr Homewood, for helping us to understand that point. Executive colleagues, any other questions that you want to raise on those items? No? Right, well, we have nine recommendations under that item, which again, I'll take it on block if those are agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item eight on the agenda, which is the treasury management framework. Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Leader. It's my fourth and last one tonight, I think, and hopefully the shortest. The treasury management framework is essentially the governance of the money market investments which generate the council about half a million a year. We are required to approve the framework or re-approve the framework annually. The framework must comply with the code of practice on the treasury management produced by the CI PFA. However, the 2018-2019 code has not yet been finalised and is awaiting policy changes from central government. Following a review by officers, it is recommended that the council extends the validity of the 2017-2018 framework until an updated framework is presented to council in April 2018.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Colleagues, any questions? Anyone wish to raise any queries on that? Right, in that case, we have one recommendation. Is that agreed? Moving to item nine and item nine is the annual pay policy statement for Waverley Borough Council and, colleagues, there's a report on that, pages 85 to 90. Basically, under the Localism Act, we are required as a local authority to undertake and to publish our annual pay policy statement and that is what this report seeks so to do tonight. And it's basically, as I say, this is an administration exercise but one that all local authorities are required to carry out. So, colleagues, I don't know if you have any queries that you wish to raise. It's quite a detailed report, as I say, on annex one, but if not, we have one recommendation under that. Colleagues, any questions? In that case, this one recommendation, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 10, which is the funding for the voluntary sector organisations for 2018-19 and the service level agreements. It's my understanding we have councillor Round who wishes to speak on that item. Councillor Round?
Thank you, Leader. Do I go now? I mean, speak, excuse me. I should be very brief because actually yesterday afternoon, I'd like to congratulate Katie Webb on sending me an email which goes a long way to removing the fears that I had. I wanted to come here and speak to you to encourage the council to not only approve this voluntary sector total, which I think is to be commended at keeping it in these straitened times at that level. That is really good news. But it's regarding the granting of money to further the services for older people in Hazlemere, where with the changed circumstances of the Orchard Club, there is money, I think, being held on one side. This was raised at the Community and Wellbeing ONS two weeks ago, which councillor Edwards and I attended and I pleaded therefore this money to be aimed at Hazelway, who are essentially taking over a lot of the work, the good work that has been done by the Orchard Club amongst other things. And I understand from Katie Webb that if this budget is, or this budget aspect is approved by yourselves this evening, then there's an intention to start discussions with Hazelway regarding a potential SLA funding, which seems to be great. So, thank you and can I assume that I'm correct in thinking that if this is agreed this evening, then that will go ahead?
You can. And councillor Edwards, would you like to take that further?
Thank you very much. Waverley council operates a service level agreement arrangement with various identified organisations. It's its main way of funding the delivery of high priority community services in partnership with the voluntary sector. Since the pilot for this new way of working in April 2012, which I was part of, the SLAs have expanded from working with three organisations to 12. The current three-year SLAs expire on the 31st of March 2018 and organisations will sign the new three-year agreements for the 1st of April 2018 to the 31st of March 2021. So that's the three years. This report proposes to protect the council's overall level of discretionary SLA at £687,105. This is despite significant reduction in Waverley's government funding and is to be applauded. I'd like at this stage to thank the ONS, who took part in the review process, and I would like to thank the Community Wellbeing ONS for their comments and observations when considering the executive panel's proposals through their subgroup and committee meetings. Moving on to the executive panel proposals, an executive panel met in the autumn and agreed proposed allocations within the overall budget. The good news is that proposals included no reductions in recognition of the challenges these small, local voluntary organisations face and enormous efforts to produce and support our residents. The key proposals are services for older people in Hazlemere. £26,000 will be ring fenced towards services for older people in the Hazlemere area, such as those previously provided by the Orchard Club. Discussions are underway to consider how these services, meaningful activities, may be delivered to meet the council's objective, which is the criteria for SLA funding. With regards to the clock house in Milford, we will be ring fencing £9,800 per year in addition to existing SLA funding level of £43,200 and this will be reviewed annually. Release of this additional amount would depend upon outcomes achieved by the clock house to develop its partnership with the council to meet its objectives. Citizens of Waverley will be required to look at their business model and work collaboratively with other bureaus to strengthen its partnership working, also to explore alternative, cost-effective venues for client meetings. Funding levels will be reviewed if requirements are not met. This work has already been started with some positive possibilities. The council is supporting CAB through this piece of work and that's all I have to report. Leader, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. That's very comprehensive, but I think, or I would hope rather, that that helped to clarify the position and the question asked by councillor Round in respect of services to older people and the position for Hazlemere. So I trust that you are more reassured now, councillor Round?
Up to a point. I didn't notice it featured very much in councillor Edwards' otherwise excellent speech. I mean, the specific issue of Hazelway.
As I say, he did talk about Hazelway, but do you want to come back briefly, councillor Edwards?
Quickly. Obviously, we can't guarantee any SLA funding until we've had a chance to speak with the applicants and, you know, find out exactly what they're going to deliver. It's part of the SLA process and they will be treated like every other applicant for SLA. Okay? Thank you.
And as we've said, we will be having that conversation with them, so hopefully that does reassure you. Colleagues, would anyone else like to comment in any way on the voluntary sector funding or the SLAs at all? No? Okay, in that case, we have, sorry, I've got such a large agenda here, we have three recommendations under that item tonight. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And we'll move to the next item, which is the performance management report for quarter two of 2017-18, so July to September 2017. And I think it fair to say that the report itself sets out the council's performance, as I say, over the period July to September of 2017. There was very strong performance across a number of service areas, with 30 out of the 40 performance indicators being within target and only 5% being off target, by more than 5%. Now, the ONS committees, and again, my thanks to the ONS committees who have reviewed this, have recommended some changes to the performance indicators and I would refer you to the additional document which you should have received separately and that details some amendments to the reporting here. So, you will see that we are amending and changing the target of missed bins and, as I say, that makes an awful lot more sense, as the committee who looked at this suggested. And we are also including a new housing indicator to measure rent arrears, which will come into force from this quarter one. So, we've got six recommendations in front of us, three of which refer to, of the recommendations actually refer to a change in the performance indicators relating to the number of visitors at Farnham Leisure Centre. Now, it was originally proposed to reduce that from 140,000 to 130,000, but following a review by the Community Wellbeing Overview and Scrutiny Committee, who have also recommended a review of all leisure centre indicators, we felt it better to include this in the review rather than start making changes and then making additional changes. So, I am actually proposing that recommendation three, I'm just checking, it is recommendation three, isn't it? That recommendation three is actually withdrawn as a result of the feedback from the overview and scrutiny committee on this item. Recommendation six, as I've said, covers the housing performance. Recommendation two is in relation to a new indicator to monitor the complaints process and I will deal with that in more detail and also get some feedback from our ONS colleagues who are here this evening when we come to item 14 on our agenda. So, in the light of that, I think I've covered now all of those recommendations and, as I say, my thanks to the ONS committees who have reviewed all these items. I'd like your views, executive, before we move to the recommendations. Thank you. I notice, as I say, that we've got, under item five, we've got the target for the missed bins moving from 26 to 50 and I've had, although councillor Bolton isn't able to join us this evening, councillor Bolton has come back and is quite clear in that the feedback he had from the Environment ONS committee was that they felt a more suitable compromise would be 40 and a more realistic target would be 40 and that's what he would also recommend. So, colleagues, in the light of that, are we agreed that we move from 26 to 50? So, colleagues, in the light of that, are we agreed that we move from 26 to 40 as opposed to 50? That's the feedback he had from the ONS? Okay. So in that case, we have, just to recap, we have item five going from 26 to 40, given the feedback from the ONS. Councillor Edwards, sorry, you wanted to come in there?
Thank you, Lea. I read the report from the ONS, and I noted the comment that they never increase the, I think the word, the term was, don't encourage a reduction in performance, because I think it's currently 26, which is an impossible figure to do on a regular basis, having been the portfolio holder previously. And the default position, I think, for fining or for whatever, for not reaching, is 50. So they took something in between, which is not a reason for coming to that figure. I think, you know, really, we should have said 50, and looked at the performance over the whole period, and said, look, 50 is a really good figure, and we, you know, our contractors are doing an excellent job. I know there are occasional issues when they change drivers or there's sickness or whatever, but in general terms, do a marvellous job. And 50, in my opinion, is a reasonable figure, but I understand where, you know, how the ONS came to that figure, but I don't understand the accuracy of the decision, because it's either 40 or 50. If you're not going to increase it, why increase it to 40? So I don't understand their reasoning there. Sorry.
Well, I think the fact is that the general feedback does appear to be that they would like to be, it to be 40 as a target. Mr Homewood, have you got anything you'd like to add at all, as the head of service on that?
Thank you, Chair. The 26 per 100,000 is a really challenging target, and I've always said that since I've been here. 50 is the limit, is the threshold where we can start penalising them financially for failure to perform against the contract. So it does seem a bit bizarre that we have a target of 26 when we can't do anything about it until it reaches 50. But I understand the concern that it gives the impression that we're lowering our performance standard, so it could have, you know, the option could have been to leave it at 26 until the contract ended in October 19. So it's really a decision for members to make, but 26 is very challenging, 50 is normally the sort of level that local authority targets are set at across the country, which is more realistic, but it's a member decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, given the feedback from ONS, given the feedback from the portfolio holder, I take on board your comments, councillor Edwards, but I think we'll stick, we'll move to the 40. So, just to clarify, item three, recommendation three, is withdrawn pending a sort of more comprehensive review by the scrutiny committees. There'll be an amendment to item, recommendation five, 26 to 40, and that, as far as I'm aware, concludes any changes within those recommendations. So to come back, we've got five recommendations now. Are those, councillor King?
I'm sorry, Lea. Recommendation six, I think there's a typing mistake in the date in the very final line. We're talking about 2018/17. Can we get that put right, please? Sorry, I've just realised. I apologise, I should have noticed it before.
And on our recommendation six, we'll make sure that that's corrected before the final paper goes out. Right. We therefore have five recommendations under that item. Colleagues, are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And moving to item 12, which is self-build and custom house building register, and that's councillor Storey.
Thank you, Lea. The government requires that we keep a register of self-build and custom house build applicants, people who want to build those kinds of projects within Waverley. The requirement isn't that they want to build here exclusively. They can register with us, they can register with Rushmore and any other borough up to, including Northumberland. So they can be registered on a number of different registers. Recently, changes in the duty on the council require that we are capable of and willing to provide spaces and planning approvals for people on the list. Currently, we have quite a large number, 133 people are on our list, which would be quite difficult for us to provide necessary spaces and so on. And so this recommendation today is to introduce what we are allowed to introduce, which is a measure of requirement for the applicants to have a local connection. And there are, set out in the report, are a number of tests for that, and doing that, we should be able to produce a list. In fact, we'll have a register of two parts. One is those people who can meet all of our local requirements, and the second is people who don't meet that, and only the part one will qualify. So it's fairly straightforward. I hope everybody will accept the recommendations.
Councillor Storey, thank you very much. Colleagues, any comments at all? Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Lea. I'd just like to thank the portfolio holder and officers for bringing this forward. I thoroughly agree, and it's something we should support where possible. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. We have three recommendations under item 12. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 13, which I'll take in councillor Bolton's absence, and that's litter and dog fowling enforcement proposal, pages 135 to 144. So, colleagues, you will see that there is a detailed report for you, before you, and last year, Waverley Borough Council increased its environmental enforcement activity in partnership with Surrey Police, having received funding from the PCC, and it's also working with Surrey County Council to tackle what is an increasing problem of fly-tipping around the borough, as many of you are aware, and I know have to frequently deal with in your own wards. So I think it fair to say, from the feedback we have as councillors, from our residents, they want to see Waverley kept clean, they want to see it as an attractive borough, and that is a priority for our council. And littering and dog fowling is a continuing problem in Waverley. We spend about £1.1 million each year keeping our streets clean, and so we do need to try and find additional ways to start to really tackle this problem. And we're proposing to join forces with East Hampshire District Council to really crack down on people who leave a mess in the borough, adopting a far tougher approach, and punishing those who leave litter or dogs' mess in the borough's streets, roads, parks, and public spaces by handing out fines to offenders. We believe that this will have a significant impact in reducing the litter and dog fowling in the borough. Now, let's not make no mistake about it, a lot of people are very thoughtful when they go out with their animals, and very considerate with their litter of all types, but unfortunately, there are some in this borough, or who come to this borough, who are not, and we are going to have zero tolerance to that. I think this will help to make it much clearer to would-be offenders, and they will actually think twice about dropping crisp packets, not picking up dogs' mess, if they know that they're going to be caught, and they will have to pay a fine. The partnership with East Hampshire will provide the council with extra resources to put more officers on the ground to catch offenders. The move will not cost Waverley any money, as East Hampshire will keep a proportion of the actual fines to cover its costs, and we're delighted to be able to work in partnership with East Hampshire District Council on this project. And I feel, for one, feel that it really does give us an opportunity to actually start to address an issue that is very dear to the hearts of a number of councillors and residents in our borough. So in order to start issuing fines for dog fowling, the council will set up public space protection orders for the borough. As part of the process to get them in place, we will be holding a public consultation in the spring to get your views, which will help to shape the proposals, and we really do want to hear from as many councillors and residents as possible. The fines will be set at £100, discounted to £75 for early payment within 14 days. They will be issued by officers to people caught dropping litter, which includes cigarette butts, chewing gum, dumping rubbish at recycling banks, and not clearing up after their dogs. Subject to the support of the executive this evening, we hope to start the trial with East Hampshire District Council, which currently provides similar service to other neighbouring authorities in May. Colleagues, I am then therefore asking that you support this report before you this evening and the recommendations included in it. Thank you. Councillor Dean?
Thank you, Lea. I mean, this complements the Fost of the Jet Team, which we've set up and is growing from strength to strength. I think the point you made about no cost to Waverley, I think that's really important for our colleagues, so we're getting a service and actually giving the community a service without a charge. And when you look at the dog fowling, it's irresponsible owners, and you're right, that we should take a very strong stance on this. I see this as a win-win for Waverley, but more importantly, a win-win for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dean. And councillor-
Thank you, Lea. Yes, absolutely applaud this initiative. I think from a health and wellbeing perspective, it's got to be better for our residents, for us to really take a strong stance on it. The only thing I would like to see is, in recommendation number four, I feel, and, you know, this has been carefully thought out, so I'm sure it's not going to be changed now, but I would like to see the pen of fix penalty of £100 with an extra £25 put on top for late payment, rather than a discount for early payment, but that's just my opinion, and well done, I hope this is going to work.
Councillor Else, thank you. We can certainly ensure that that's passed back in the consultation and that is fed through at that point. Any other comments, colleagues? No? In that case, we've got four recommendations under that item. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And we then move to item 14, which is the Wayhill Car Park Authority to apply for deregistration of common land. I've got councillor Round down to speak on that item. Councillor Round?
Thank you, Lea. I think there are two major points here, and conscious of how quickly four minutes erodes, if you rub it on, I'm going to cut some of the detail out. A, there's swapping the land for some other land so that it can be dealt with, because at the moment, I think the parking is illegal under strict law. And secondly, is the issue of surfacing the car park and charging to pay. Five years ago, that proposal was tried, and it was met with a lot of public resistance, and it was shelved, basically saying, please, Waverley, can you wait until the neighbourhood plan's got a little bit more traction, and we might find out what it is that people want to do with that land? Because frankly, I agree, it is a bit of an eyesore. Unfortunately, the neighbourhood plan isn't there yet, but it's not far away, I think. It's riding on the back of some of our Local Plan One, et cetera. And it's clear that the consultation taken so far, there is agreement that this land should be developed to the benefit of the community, maybe some eye-catching facility there, or maybe just housing, but with a car park underneath it, because we're very short of parking space in Haslemere. My point is, may please, not quite yet, let's see if that turns out to be the agreed post-referendum view of residents, that they want that to happen to this land. I think there are a number of statements and claims in the paragraphs on page 145 and the next one or two, and as I said earlier, I'm not going to go into the detail of them, but basically, I'm not sure there's any opposition to commuters parking there. We know, because we surveyed them some years, a few years ago, it is mostly commuters from well outside of Haslemere. And if they have to pay to park there, many of them won't, and they'll go and throttle the residential streets again, thus negating what we might have achieved with expanding a station car park. I know street parking is not an issue this council can deal with, it's to do with Surrey, and we wish they would take steps to ameliorate the pain that residents feel. So really, I'm saying, let's wait a bit and consult. There isn't anything in these pages here, although when I spoke to councillor Edwards the other day, he assured me, of course we're going to consult. Well, let's see it agreed in writing, let's see that we are going to consult residents as to what they want to do with that land, and the parking. There would have to be some charges if it's redeveloped, one would hope that the local shopkeepers and their staff are treated well. But the second point, and I'm running out of time, is the land swap. I do think we have to be very careful here, otherwise we might become a laughingstock. How many of you have visited this land as proposed to swap? It's rubbish. It's partly used as a tip. It is smaller than the existing one. To say it's increased value from ecological purpose might be true, because a car park's a car park, but to say it's of equivalent size, amenity, and monetary value, it plainly isn't. The Wayhill Car Park will be worth millions if it could be developed. This land, that you're proposing to swap it with, will never be worth anything. It's also publicly accessible at the moment, anyway. So if you can't take the land you'd previously thought of in Tanners Lane, neither can you take this. You need mountaineering skills to go on it. I tried. I didn't go far, I haven't got any abseiling rope. It is very steep. It is, frankly, a joke, and that's what I've heard people say in Haslemere. We would be laughed at if we continue to propose this land as the swap. Be far better to revert to what we had as the intention five years ago, which is referred to in these pages. How well timed was that? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Round. Colleagues? Councillor Edwards, you wanted to come in?
Yeah, I'm coming back on behalf of councillor Bolton, and myself, actually. The area known as the Wayhill Fairground Car Park, it's an area designated as common land, okay? It is, however, been used for free car parking for several decades, and in its current condition, it's no longer of any ecological value or suitable for use as common land. That's obvious. Car parking on the majority of the site is predominantly commuter parking, and previous surveys done by one of our members here, and a member of the town council, have confirmed that 80% plus of these commuters travel in from out of the borough to catch the train to London, and make little, if any, contribution to the local economy or community. A parking place order was introduced several years ago, introducing limited waiting in part of the car park to ensure that some space was kept available for shoppers and visitors to local businesses. And that car park was not completely filled with commuters. This has proved effective to date, but is reliant on effective enforcement. This has proved effective to date, but is reliant on effective enforcement. The car park surface is also in need of constant repair and therefore a source of funds to pay for this is also essential. There's a need to regularise the position regarding parking and identify another area to replace it as common land. De-registration of the land as common land was investigated in 2012, but at that time was not pursued by the council. So we're now in 2018 and we're in a worse position. Broader discussions about the future of this site, along with several other potential sites in Hazemere, are under discussion by the borough and town councils and other interested groups as part of the broader place shaping agenda. These discussions and any subsequent developments will take several years to evolve. And we were talking not two or three years, we're talking several years. And in the interim, it is recognised that something needs to be done and we need to do it to improve the deteriorating condition of the site and to regularise, regularise its use as a car park for both commuters and for the local community and businesses. It's essential. Otherwise, the businesses will close. If people can't park and visit the businesses, you might as well pack up. An area of land has been identified as an alternative for designation as common land. And discussions have taken place with Natural England, who recognise the lack of amenity or ecological value on the Wayhill site and are supportive of the land swap. That's Natural England. It is of equivalent size to the area subject to the deregistration application. So it's the same size, or very nearly the same size, or slightly bigger, you know. It's within a short walking distance via a footbridge over the railway and would be made accessible for considerably improved community use compared with the current site. The executive is therefore recommended to support the proposed exchange of these areas of land to enable the resurfacing of the land currently used for car parking and enable it to be managed more effectively, pending the development of long-term proposals for its use. And that's all I can recommend. Thank you, leader.
Thank you. Um, can I ask Mr Bainbridge to come in, please, on that? And then Mrs King.
Uh, thank you, leader. Um, just picking up a point about the longer term aims in potential future uses beyond, you know, beyond use as a car park. Just to really point out that even those longer term uses would require an application for this to no longer be common land, either through an application for consent to build on it, which is what we were in the process of doing a few years ago, or to swap. So if there is a longer term goal to produce, you know, even greater facilities on that land, either building on it and, and providing community facilities or business premises or whatever it might be down the line, that will still require an application in the future to the planning inspectorate. Now, that application could be the same application again, i.e. to, to build on, in which case you'd lose the common land from Hazemere entirely. Or at that stage, it would be an application to swap the land as we're proposing now. So you either have a net loss of common land or you have the same or more or less the same area, I don't know the dimensions, that you have now. Just making that point, really, that, that this application in either option comes sooner or, or later. Um, and just one other point, if I may, regarding the withdrawal of the application last time. That was in regard to Hazemere Vision's potential proposals for that site, which never really came forward, as I understand it, rather than the neighbourhood plan from Hazemere, but it was really the Hazemere Vision objections to that application and their potential proposals at that time that led to the council withdrawing that application.
Mr Bainbridge, thank you very much. Councillor, Mrs King.
Thank you very much, leader. Mr Bainbridge has actually said pretty much what I was going to start to say. This report is purely a, a report for the deregistration of the common land. No matter what happens to it in the future, it has to be deregulated. You might just as well get on with it now. And to be frank, we, sooner we sort that car park out, parking space, no matter what we do with it, the better. Uh, it happens to be in my ward. The local community, both the residents and the tradespeople in Wayhill, not in the centre of Hazemere, but in Wayhill, are fed up. They can't park to nip to the shops, there's nowhere to go. Uh, so they really are pretty fed up and they would actually, are now very supportive of Waverley's proposals. Thank you, as am I.
Thank you, councillor King. I think it fair to say that um, uh, that we've got to do something. We, this has been in, almost in a too difficult box for a long time for a number of reasons. And the facts are that um, the, the, the area itself absolutely does, does no favours for Hazemere and we have got to do something. And we've got to do something sooner rather than later. And we need to start that process. Um, in terms of the land swap, well, Natural England are supportive. I take on board the comments made by councillor Round. Um, and obviously there is work that can be done to, to make that other land um, uh, more attractive, shall we say, for want of a better phrase. Um, but we have to start somewhere and we, you know, we're six years down the line. We're no further forward. We have a situation where a lot of the time, um, businesses in Wayhill are struggling because people have got nowhere to park. And um, the traders and the shoppers are getting frustrated. And we need to start to do something. So we're, we're, we're ma, we're moving with this proposal. Uh, there are recommendations before you as an executive tonight. Let's also be very clear that longer term, um, this will make sure that um, the actual car parking area that is there is used and laid out more efficiently. But as has already been stated by Mr Bainbridge and councillor Edwards, we don't know exactly where, where this may go in the future. And it may be subject to another planning application. Um, it may be that there are, there are other aspirations for that land. And so nothing is a final done deal, because we will need to move forward and consult and consult with residents and with, with local traders and businesses and so forth. So I see this as a sensible first step. We need to actually sort out this land. We need to put in place this land swap. We need to deregulate, regulate, deregulate, excuse me, um, the, the land. And we need to at least start, because we cannot wait another six years and we will be in a far worse position. The site will deteriorate far more. And as I say, Hazemere deserves better. So unless anyone has got anything they wish to add to that, can we move to the recommendations, colleagues? Thank you. In that case, we will move to the recommendations. And there's one recommendation under item 14. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Item 15, which is the council's prevent strategy. Councillor Dean.
Thank you, leader. The government's prevent strategy has three key objectives, which is responding to ideological challenge of terrorism, preventing people from being drawn into terrorism and to reduce the risk of radicalisation. The prevent duty applies to Waverley Borough Council and other agencies working for us. And these are working with vulnerable adults and children. Within the document, there is an implementation plan which outlines the council's prevent duties and lead responsibilities. It sets out how we will meet our obligations. It applies to all staff, agency workers, volunteers and contractors, and indeed members as well. This is about safeguarding and the document is consistent to the recent safeguarding document that I presented prior to Christmas. The document has been scrutinised by the Community and Wellbeing Committee and I'm grateful for that. They've endorsed its adoption and have recommended training to all councillors. This will happen. There is one recommendation which is outlined on page nine of your agenda. Thank you, leader.
Councillor Dean, thank you. Colleagues, any comments on that? Councillor, Mrs Els.
Thank you, leader. Um, yes, this is uh, very welcome, I think. It's um, a very good document. But just so that I can be assured it is entirely comprehensive, I noticed that in the risk assessments, there is no mention of licensing. And I would just like to be assured that the Prevent Implementation Plan will incorporate our ability to give licence to people to carry out certain operations. Um, in respect in particular of CBS checks um, and other safeguarding principles that can be used. I, I feel that um, there might be um, uh, um, a hole in, in the um, in our ability to control um, what people might do if we don't close um, all the holes. And I'm sorry, I'm not putting this very well, but it, it's a bit of a roundabout thought I've got. Uh, for example, we licence premises, we, we put conditions on licences that certain people must have DBS checks, et cetera. Um, and if we don't ensure that that is done, then there's an element of possibility that people will slip through the net. So I'm sorry, I'm rambling a bit, but I hope you understand my, my principle.
Councillor Dean.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, this is a living document and I think as well as safeguarding, the document will be amended to the circumstances um, in society. So it is a living document. You're, you're absolutely correct, licensing, um, not only licensing premises, but things such as taxis, which played a huge part in the safeguarding policy. So absolutely um, supportive of what you say and about the safeguarding checks. Um, but I will, will feed it back and say this is a, a living document and I would hope all members, um, as time goes on, will have different aspects they feel could be tightened up. So I, I welcome those views. I could just finish off just to thank the, um, it's quite a difficult document to distill into a few pages with so much national spotlight on it. And the community safety team, I think, have done a very, very good job in actually getting a complex document into a document that you can understand what our responsibilities are. So just wanted to thank the community safety team here at Waverley, who have done a tremendous amount of work on it, effectively on our behalf, and produced such a good document. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dean. And councillor Els, I think you make a, a very valid point. Um, as councillor Dean has said, it's, it's sort of a, a living document. So um, can I ask that you liaise with councillor Dean and he will work with the head of service and, and strategic director to ensure that that is, is highlighted um, and, and that wording is, is drawn out in the appropriate manner? Thank you. Colleagues, any other comments or can we move to the recommendation? In that case, if we can move to the recommendation under item 15, there's one recommendation, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Um, we'll move to item 16, which is Waverley's complaints handling policy and a review of, of complaints. And the report itself actually proposes some changes to um, the council's handling policy. And that's been reviewed by the chief executive. And the report before you proposes to help streamline the procedure from three stages to two. The aim being to improve customer satisfaction by reducing the overall time it takes to resolve those complaints. And by doing this, we'll also make the best use of limited resources. Um, but the approach reflects successful practice in the great majority of councils. Now, this was reviewed by the Value For Money Overview and Scrutiny Committee and councillor Band is here this evening. And I wonder if I could just ask councillor Band um, just for a few of, of his, his thoughts on this? Because I know as councillors, we're frequently um, at the receiving end of, from our, our residents who have made complaints and um, are, are perhaps not happy with, with us as a council. And um, I'd be interested to just hear a little bit more about the thoughts and the views of your committee, if I can spring that upon you, councillor Band.
Thank you, leader. Um, well, we did discuss this at quite some length in the Value For Money. And, and our concern was that as originally drafted, it appeared that the chief executive and other directors were opting out of the process. And, and we really didn't believe that was, that was, was what was intended, because I don't think any of us have come across a complaints procedure where the buck doesn't stop with the chief executive. And, and so we were wanting to seek reassurance that there would be active engagement by the, the chief executive and directors as to what was going on. And in fact, that's after some discussion, that's the assurance we sought. Uh, see, it's not yet, we did ask and suggest that it might be written into the procedure itself, so people could see that there was a reporting process, not just from the heads of service, but from both stages, that the internal reporting process did ensure that the directors and chief executive were aware of the complaints coming through and were, and were aware of the actions being taken by their staff. So that, that was the issue that was discussed at some length. Uh, and, and with, with the acknowledgement from the chief executive, who was present at the meeting, that that was the, was the intention, um, we were satisfied to agree the principles of the proposed procedure. We recognise it would speed things up. We recognise that there is custom and practice elsewhere. But I think we did feel that we wanted to ensure and that councillors could want, themselves want to be satisfied that the chief executive and directors were engaged in the overall process. Thank you, leader.
Councillor Band, thank you. And um, would you please pass on my thanks to the rest of the committee as well? Because I know that um, that this is something that you did look at in depth. We can certainly draw that out, I think, page 176. So we can make sure that we, we actually draw that out more, as, as you've stated on the report. Um, and I know that um, already having spoken with the chief executive and the, the strategic directors, that they are very keen and, and will be um, very much involved in, in the, in this process as it moves forward. Um, the most important thing as far as I'm concerned is that um, we have a policy that everyone is very clear about and we have a policy that works and that we don't just go through an automotive process. What we need to make sure is that we learn from um, any complaints and we learn from um, and, and there are often lessons to be learned and we shouldn't be afraid of that. Um, so I think we all welcome this. It's been a, a long time coming. Um, you know, often we, we need a, a fresh pair of eyes to start to look at um, how, how can we do something more, more effectively? Um, and as I say, I think working and, and taking a lot of the um, feedback from ONS, which has been helpful, so as I say, my thanks to them. Um, hopefully, we can, we can make sure that we, we handle our complaints in a, a much more proactive manner, um, which, which is what councillors and our residents clearly want to see. Councillor Edwards, I can see you gesturing there.
Uh, thank you, leader. Yeah, I, I attended the ONS and I heard the debate and it was very good. Um, yeah, there are two things, basically. We're going to streamline, streamline the, the process, make it quicker and hopefully better. However, uh, we do, do, we do not need to cut out the um, uh, senior management team wholesale. At least they'll be aware of things and so long as that, that's written into the process, that I'm sure the ONS will be satisfied. But there were strong feelings about that, so uh, you know, it's, it's very clear. They wanted both, they wanted the best of both worlds, basically.
you know, it's very clear, they wanted both, they wanted the best of both worlds, basically, and rightly so.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other comments? Right, my thanks to Mr Clark and Mr Taylor, who have actually drawn to my attention that actually there is a section on page 181 where we can, where they've drawn that particular comment out, councillor Band, so we'd just make sure that that gels completely with what your committee wanted to see as well. But unless anyone's got anything further they want to add, we have one recommendation under item 16. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Colleagues, we move to item 17, which is the review of the scheme of delegation. And briefly, in summary, Waverley's full council in April of last year approved and adopted a new scheme of delegation for the council, and at that time it was agreed that the scheme would be monitored and reviewed on a regular basis. We've had a handful of initial amendments that were put forward by the standards panel last June and were subsequently agreed by council, and the standards panel met again last week and undertook a further planned review of the scheme, and the result of that is that they've proposed a number of further amendments which are set out in the papers There was quite a lot of feedback around planning and changes relating to planning, and the calling in of planning applications for consideration by the planning committee. And I have to say, the standards panel have done a really excellent job here, and they're putting through, basically, and putting forward three main proposed changes. So the first is that it gives the head of planning a greater degree of general discretion to support late call-ins where there are sound planning reasons. The second is that applications that generate five or more letters of either objection or support will not be agreed by way of delegated authority without first actually contacting the ward member, so the planning officer will contact the ward member and see, and get them to confirm if they are happy or if it needs to go to committee. And thirdly, that for complete clarity, the description of what should go to a joint planning committee that's contained within the council's constitution will also be included within the scheme of delegation. So there are three clear amendments there that we are confident now, and the standards panel are confident, rather, actually address the concerns being raised by members and the feedback from members around planning. Colleagues, any queries on that, any one wish to, yes, councillor Dinas?
Thank you, Leader. I was part of that committee who went through the document, and I think when you see the amendments, even the minor amendments, a lot of thought has gone in to make sure it's fit for purpose. I think the three main proposals are very appropriate and are correct, but I think this is a document that the standards panel, I think, will have to go back on a regular basis as we do, because as time changes, then so do these. So I think it's a good start to the process, I think we're at the right place now, but I wouldn't be surprised if in six months or 12 months we're back again with other amendments to make the system even better, but thank you.
Turn the microphone on. councillor Dinas, thank you very much. Colleagues, any other comments, or can we move councillor Storey?
Thank you, Leader. I just want to thank the standards panel, I couldn't get the word in my head. I want to thank the standards panel for what they've particularly processed with regard to planning. Since I became executive member for planning, I've had lots of comments made that the scheme of delegation had gone too far, that too much was allowed to go through without being scrutinised by one of the planning committees. And I think that the schedule that they've come up with is a very good balance between what can be delegated and what should come to a planning committee. I have no doubt that, as councillor Dinas has said, in the few months' time, that balance maybe needs to be tweaked one way or the other a bit further, but for the moment, I'm very happy to see what has been put forward and will certainly support it.
Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues? In that case, we've got one recommendation, is that agreed?
Agreed.
We move to item 18, which is the transfer of land and the lease of store at Gostrey Meadow in Farnham, and that's councillors Martin and councillor Dinas. Which one of you would like to take this? councillor Dinas?
I'll take this, Leader. If you look at your papers, page 191, there's a map, so it's nice and simple. It's a very small area of land, we're talking about 10 square metres, and it's to be transferred to the Farnham Town Council, who are very, very supportive of this, and this is to construct a disabled toilet, and you'll see that's in red, and afterwards to transfer to the Farnham Town Council, the joint-in-shelter, but that shelter will need some repairs. This will be for a lease of anything up to 50 years, there's still some negotiations on that, but this is a scheme that both Farnham Town Council and ourselves think is a win-win situation. Thank you, Leader.
Colleagues, any comments? councillor Martin, anything you wish to add to that?
Really not a lot to add, but as councillor Dinas said, I mean, this is win-win. It's a benefit for the council because it ceases to be a liability, it's a benefit for the people of Farnham because we get the benefits of the improved look of the shelter, the introduction of the disabled public convenience. So I mean, I think it's tidying up an area, it's putting it into ownership of a body that will do something better with it than we've been able to do over the years, so I thoroughly recommend it.
councillor Els?
Just a very quick point, but in this day and age, we should be calling these places accessible toilets, not disabled toilets. If they're disabled, it means they don't work.
Colleagues, any other comments? Any other comments? No?
I'd just like to add my congratulations to the portfolio holders and to welcome the transfer to Farnham Town Council, who do an excellent job on their community spaces, and I look forward to seeing, you know, a refurbished shelter there in the near future. We go regularly on a Sunday during the summer to watch the concerts there, which, again, are sponsored by Farnham Town Council, and well done to Farnham.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. So, colleagues, we've got two recommendations under that item, are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. And we'll now move, we have a confidential item to deal with, so I'm now going to ask if you are agreed that we move to a motion to exclude the press and public?
Agreed.
Colleagues, thank you, and if we can now... ...on item 20, which is the work of the working group. We have on page 237 four recommendations, and I'll take those on block if they're agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And once again, can I just record the thanks of the executive to everyone involved, the committee, but also all the officers, and Mrs Cameron as well for all her hard work in keeping everyone in order and clerking and organising this subcommittee. Colleagues, we have no other, colleagues, we have no other business, so in that case, I now declare the meeting closed.